Out of what notice of this meeting has been provided by Resolution 269-2013, setting the 2014 meeting dates, sending a copy to the record and the Jewish standard, bong a copy in the Township Clerk's office and posting it on the Municipal Building bulletin board. And this is Mary here by direct that this statement be included in the.
Good evening and welcome tonight. We have with us William Browner, Township Manager, Jamie Evelina, the Township Clerk, Stanley Turtt and Bill Rupp from the law firm of Winnie Banta, Hamba, blah, blah, blah. There's just too many names on that wall. Upcoming events, the next televised council meeting will take place on Tuesday, April 29, with legal opening to begin at 7:00 and public input to begin at 8:00 p.m. The next confidential paper shredding day will be held on Saturday, April 12, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the municipal complex parking lot. The event is open to all township residents and employees. Shredding is limited to two, 33-gallon-sized garbage bags, and confidential papers will only be accepted. And sign up for the spring townwide garage sale begins Monday, April 7. To sign up, please visit our website, tenecknj.gov, and click on Residents or contact Isa Abasi at 201-837-1600, extension 1003, or email at I A B B A S I at tenecknj.gov. And then for tonight, we have no presentations and no adoption of ordinances, so we're going to begin the meeting with good and welfare. As we do every meeting, residents or anyone will have five minutes to come to the microphone, speak on any issue you'd like to, on the agenda or not. I ask that everyone silence their cellphones to be respectful to the speakers, and we will start if any council members have commented before.
And in closed session, I think you should announce we discussed the contract negotiations.
In closed session, we discussed contract negotiations with our fire department, both collective bargaining units from the fire department, as well as interviews for the Historic New Brunswick Landing Commission and the Teneck Historic Commission.
Negotiation issues concerning senior citizen housing.
Correct. Okay. Any council members? No? Good and welfare is now open to the public. As you come to the microphone, all you need to do is state your name.
My name is George Stafford. I'm the Outreach Director for the New Jersey Highlands Coalition, and I'm here tonight to ask, request of the governing body to consider a resolution of support for the 2004 New Jersey Water Protection and Planning Act, better known as the Highlands Act. The reason the Coalition is reaching out to governing bodies around the northern part of the state is because they're about to rewrite this puppy dog right here, which is the New Jersey Highlands Regional Master Plan. And there has been a lot of talk at the Highlands Council meetings about changing some of the regulations that would add to runoff and would jeopardize the quality of water that's received by almost over 5 million people in New Jersey. There are 88 towns in the Highlands which obviously use Highlands water, another 244 towns, cities, villages, et cetera, that use Highlands water. And there's a push on to increase what they call the nitrate dilution, which is a very polite term for how much human waste we're going to put in the groundwater. I've heard it termed differently. But there are a lot of things going on. When this was originally put together, there were open meetings, there were different committees from the council. There's a committee that broke into the public and everyone heard the discussions on what was going on. Presently, there are four people on the committee. All the meetings will be closed to the public, the chairman said, so that the council members would feel more comfortable talking about what's going on. So there's also a few other things. One of the things is there's a community in the Highlands which has passed a resolution asking the state legislature to add a tax to communities that receive water from the Highlands to offset the losses they've had from ratables through the restrictions on the Highlands Act. Now, I was a tax commissioner in Morris County. That kind of got me curious, so I pulled the abstract of ratables from 2004 to 2012 on the New Jersey Highlands and checked out where the losses were, and there weren't any. There have been real estate losses and ratable losses in the Highlands over between 2008 and 2012, exactly as there have been in every place else in New Jersey and the rest of the world for that matter. Immediately after the Highlands Act was passed in 2004, land values and improvement values, ratables in the Highlands skyrocketed, just like they did every place else because we had a real estate bubble. So there's a lot of crazy things going on in the Highlands, and we are asking communities like yours who receive water from the Highlands, NJDEP and the U.S. Geological Survey says that you get up to 25% of your water from Highland Services. I believe that the main supplier is...
Yeah.
And some get from Jersey City as well. So water's like electricity. When you put the molecules together, nobody knows which is which, but about 20, up to 25% of your water comes from Highland sources. So we are asking you to consider a resolution. I have the copies of the resolution here. When I joined the Highlands Coalition, it was 950 words on three pages. Being a former town councilman, I got it down to 160 words on one page. Because, you know, you guys got enough paper to go through, as it's plain to see. So I have the resolution here. I have some other information for you. The communities in Bergen County and how much water they receive. A number of communities in Bergen County have already done this, Montvale, Franklin Lakes, Garfield, I'm just pulling these off the top of my head, and the Freeholder Board has endorsed our resolution. So I'll leave that with you. My contact information is on the resolution itself, so if you have any questions or you need any backup information or anything else in that regard, please feel free to call me or email me. And if you have any questions now, also, if you have a door here that needs to be held open, I can leave one of these with you, if you'd like. Thank you very much. So I'll leave these with the clerk. And unless you have a question, I'll leave you in peace for the rest of your meeting. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Thank you, ladies.
Anyone else? Dr. Huffman?
Good evening, members of council. First, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays since we won't be together for another almost four weeks, so, it is four weeks, so happy holidays. I also, having been on the website and checked, I want to thank you for Resolution B, reappointing the Environmental Advisory Board representing Voty Park. I'm sad to say personally that I want to take a moment to thank Dr. Chuck Powers, who has sent in a letter asking not to be reappointed. It's important for us to recognize that his expertise and his insight, especially early in the process when we were trying to get this thing off the ground and working, was invaluable, not only to the advisory board, but especially to me and how he dealt with advisory boards and how he looked at all the data and how he was doing with interviewing. And I want to personally thank him for all the time and effort that he has spent on behalf of the citizens of Teneck. All I can also, since you're being reappointed, thank Mr. Browner, Mr. Abasi, his executive assistant, and even Glenn and Glenn Crockett for their administrative support, because they've never hindered us in our work and they've always supported anything that I've asked for. And I thank them very much for it, and I look forward to working together and advising the council as we move forward. Tonight, I have three points that I would like to bring up in this year when we're dealing with budgetary constraints. One that I think is of increasing importance. Since the Voty Park fields are essentially available for use even though they are offline, we've had daily calls to the police or daily people using them almost every day, three or four times a day, even when Dakota Excavating was there earlier today, there were people playing, moving goals, playing football, soccer, and things of this nature. It is clear to me that when we're having a $3 to $4 million project, that we need somebody there. We need, whether you call them a guard, a park ranger, a special, whatever you want to name it, I don't care, but cameras aren't going to work. We need somebody there particularly at night in case there's problems with lighting, confusion with parking, with handicap parking, which is being built as we speak, and other issues. And I understand it's a cost, but it is a savings. It's pound foolish in my mind not to have somebody there to protect the fields at night because everything is going to be automated and they're the ones who are going to have all the numbers and things of that nature to make sure that the fields are properly used and protected. Secondly, while not this year, it is clear from talking to Ms. Crockett and seeing the all the calls and emails that I have received from the soccer and youth baseball communities, youth soccer and baseball communities, that in next year, we have to really consider a full-time facilities manager. The amount of time and effort that they are spending dealing with requests and not yet even with a field not even being assigned to the township is truly overwhelming. And trying to manage the different types of fields and activities that are going to be there is going to take away from the other aspects of the increasing use of working with the Board of Education and our school board in using of the gyms both in the elementary and the middle schools and in the high school. And while we have a very good part-time person, I think we're running behind in getting things done in a timely manner, and Ms. Crockett has a lot of other things to do besides essentially doing hotel management on a township-wide basis. Finally, I would like to note that this year, when, at least when soccer starts in the fall, when, you know, football starts in the fall, but particularly soccer, with all of our fields concentrated in almost one spot, we'll have about 850 children playing soccer at the same time. And I don't know of any woman in my family that will use a porta potty. I think it is adamant that we start thinking strongly about doing Phase Two, which is putting in the permanent bathrooms, more women than men, that we deal with a picnic area or an area where people can sit out of the sun and place to be protected if there is lightning or thunder, rather than just a band shell with that many people, that we have an area where we can store our equipment, football and soccer particularly out of the elements, and that we have a canteen where people can get coffee or hot things or things of that nature because the stands essentially are outside the area where you can sit and eat and enjoy nice weather or be chilly and be able to handle these things. I would ask that the council very much consider going forward on those projects. Once again, happy holidays and thank you very much for all your support.
Anyone else? Dr. Powers?
Chuck Powers, before I get to the substance, I don't remember this council having taken any action whatsoever on the contemporary tax appeal issues being provided to about 1,800 people in the township. About, we don't know how many, maybe a third have gotten checks. And I, what I don't understand is how I got this check for $1,600, because I don't remember you having taken any action whatsoever to either approve those or on a bill list. I also don't understand, I hope that somebody's getting worried about the fact that you do not have an annual financial statement, at least you don't have on the website. I tried to suggest last time that that's fundamental to be able to do a legitimate job on the budget. You were promised that by a week ago, a week ago last Friday. You don't have it, so far as I know. I'm retiring from a board that I loved because I think I can do a better job of serving the people of Teneck by not being constrained by being a part of what I believe to be a series of just unbelievable mistakes that are just going on in relationship to Voty. Beginning with tonight's resolution, you are going to be asked to pass a resolution to a non-existent board. The board hasn't existed since the 31st of December, 2013. You don't have a resolution to do, to create that board tonight. I don't know what in the, is it your attorneys who are not doing this? What in the world is going on in Teneck when it doesn't believe it has to, I've had a legal opinion, there is no, Dr. Huffman doesn't have a board tonight. You may have people appointed to something, but you haven't got a board. And it's consistent with the way in which everything is done. I suggested to you way back in the beginning that you got to look more carefully at the capabilities of Dakota, because I said I didn't think, by looking at the way they did, that they knew the first thing about anything related to the environment, and they don't. Because although in June 2013, you gave them a contract and gave them an entire six-month period during which the dry period, when they could have gone and gotten the lead out, they simply didn't do it. I don't know that there was, there was mix-ups between your acting engineer, who as you know, I believe is so badly conflicted by virtue of what it is that the, your attorney said is just a mere, a mere sort of technicality about the fact that your acting engineer is recommending himself for jobs that he's taking and in becoming a subcontractor on complex projects at this point that don't have any, any basis in your, in your, in your, all, all the materials that you are receiving and which I am receiving by Oprah because those of us who are concerned about transparency of this town are really, really concerned that underlying what you're doing is not a process that gets you to any kind of right action. I don't know that you're going to actually get your Green Acres money. It's going to be close. Sorge is amazing. The LSRP that you have is fantastic, and I'll tell you more about that sometime. But you don't have what he needs in order to get to a remediation agreement that DEP can sign off on and give you the first three quarters. And as I understand it, you're very, very unlikely, unless things get very dry out there, to be able to take that lead out after a tough winter that need not have been if anybody had, had been staying on top of that, having an engineer who knew what the heck was going on, having an overseer that knew what was going on, having an architect to whom their crew was responding to get that lead out. And it's not there. It's not a public health threat. I'm not suggesting that. But I am suggesting to you that I actually know one heck of a lot about this. You know, the mayor took a shot at me by saying, "You're not an engineer, even though you're a professor of engineering." Well, so also, as a matter of fact, is your Secretary of Energy, a professor of engineering at MIT with no, with no engineering degree. I actually happen to be, by virtue of what this secretary, last secretary said, responsible, co-principal investigator for a resequencing of a $116 billion, 75-year cleanup of the Hanford site in Washington. That's my primary responsibility at the moment. I think that I can actually advise you about the fact that you don't have an excavation process for this thing that is safe, and if you took a look at merely at Google, you would see, you would see all of the OSHA requirements that say that what you did out here was the wrong thing. You don't need to go out to an engineer. You need to look back at Google.
Anyone else wish to speak? Dr. Toffler?
Dr. Barbara Lay Toffler, Teneck. There's been a lot of talk about Oprah's in the last many weeks, and several of us have received from Ms. Evelina and Oprah requests from Mr. Jonathan Mantel of Wyndham Road, I believe, a member of the same congregation as Councilmember Schwartz. And I am asked for particular information regarding the four-day work week and the council censure. I am asked for that from 2010 until the middle of March 2014. I have three questions that I want to ask. One, I have been a private citizen since July 1, 2012. I am asking, am I, as a private citizen, are my emails subject to Oprah-ing through the government by another private citizen? That's my first question. So am I somehow having to give emails that I have written as a private citizen in a government Oprah? Two, my second question is, and I think I know the answer to this, though I've been a private citizen since July 1, 2012, am I required to give requested emails and text messages, but I don't use very much texting, so nobody's going to get text messages from me, emails from all the time that I was on the council forever and ever, as long as I may live? That is my second question. My third question is more a question of if you all are aware of what Mr. Mantel has asked, and though I have some of it here tonight, I am not going to give it to you tonight. I have till, I believe, the end of the week to provide all the emails I'm requested, and unlike many other people, I will be, I will be providing all of those emails. But I am asking some of the emails, as I said, 2010 until June 30, 2012, regarding the four-day work week and the censure. All of you have received emails from me that I will have to provide to Mr. Mantel through the clerk. Are you all aware that the emails that I will provide, and you have gotten these though you chose not to respond to them, all of the emails that, not all, the emails that I will provide will provide unrefutable evidence that Mr. Rupp, Attorney William Rupp, did not tell the truth, i.e. lied on his sworn affidavit presented to the court. That will be in the emails. If you look back, you have those emails, if you know what his affidavit said. So I thought I would let you know that this will be coming. I will be responding to Mr. Mantel's request, and actually, I'm very pleased with the material that I'll be providing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Rose?
Howard Rose, Teneck resident. Good evening. Hope your next couple of weeks are relaxing and intense in that mode. I was not here for the last meeting, and I attend many, many meetings, so I kind of feel out of the loop even by missing one. And I hope that I can get a quick, easy response on this as to what is going on regarding the budget at this point in time, whether all the unanswered questions have been resolved regarding the reevaluation information that hasn't been disclosed to the public and to the council. There were questions regarding whether the budget increase was a projected amount and it was refuted by a resident. I'm wondering if that's been resolved completely? Has that resident been in discussion with the manager's office? And has there been any attempt to just find out if there's any concerns that are valid or whether they're just, you know, we're over it? Regarding resolution, Part B, appointment to the environmental board, I, my initial thoughts in reading it earlier today were, this is very good. I don't know if these are continuing members or new appointees, regardless of which, it's an important group of people. I regret this evening hearing that a main component of that list of people is not participating and adding to it. I think it'll be the group's loss as well as the town's. Resolution D, the emergency, I'm not sure what it is, temporary, it's PERS for $1 million and change, is going to a PFRS to $4.5 million and more as an emergency temporary kind of a program. Does this mean that $3 million and change comes back to the town at a later date because it's some kind of temporary loan for either something unanticipated or not quite planned Literally no detail regarding what it is in the information. Ordinance 10 that you're considering for 2014, which is a downtown business zone, I'm so glad to see that making progress along the lines. It has long been called for and even longer understood why it was there in the first place, and I know that it's having been a prior chairperson of the Teneck Business Improvement District at that point in time. Chuck Stewart, sounds very interesting, Henry. Glad to have seen that. I'm wondering, can anything be done to get a, some kind of a display of his work at the library for a period of time? Wouldn't that be great? Calendar, on 4/26/27, we have a national takeback at the police department. If you click on the site for that, or you click on a couple of lines below it on the calendar, it goes, it goes to give you details, which repeats that it's a national takeback day at the police department. Takeback what? How? There's no detail on it for anyone reading it to understand what it's advertising. On 5/01, and I don't know who's handling the calendars, but maybe there'd be a good place where someone like me might be reassessing feedback saying, huh? What's going on? Explain it. On 5/1, it's highlighted, but if you click on it, it says, "No activity." 5/13 is not highlighted, and it seems to me that it's a fairly important day that perhaps should be linked to the fact that we're having an election, and perhaps there should be even something you can click where you can find out based upon that five or six-sheet paper of addresses, zone, districts for the zones, where you vote, that comes along with a petition for any candidate. Maybe the link to that would help people say, ah, it's election day, where do I vote? And get that information right online. It's a good place to have that kind of information for so important day. Thank you for your time. I hope you can use some of the suggestions.
Anyone else care to speak? Everyone just wants to be the last speaker? It can't all be last, Mr. Song.
Alan Song, Teneck resident. I sincerely hope that good and welfare will be closed after I speak. The Open Public Records Act is intended to ensure access to the public and to the press for information about critical issues of interest to the public. And I'm glad to see that what seems to be piled up here on these tables is, after several weeks, some portion of the requested material that I hope will be provided. But there are still many unanswered questions. We still have no annual financial statement, which is due by statute on February 10. That is still not posted, still not available online, and 50 days late. The annual financial statement provides information that basically closes the books for the previous year, that allows the public to determine how we did last year, what is our financial condition. The explanation that was offered at the last meeting by the manager was unreasonable and unjustifiable, and blamed tax appeals for the delay in producing this document. The numbers that were needed for the impact that would appear on the annual financial statement were available by mid to late January, and there is no reason for any delay in the production of that statement. Now, there was a tremendous impact from those tax appeals. The 1,900-some-odd appeals filed cost another $90 million in ratables, and it cost the township $2.2 million in repayments to homeowners. Discussing revaluation at the last meeting, the deputy mayor stated that there had been no call for a reassessment or revaluation in 2012. That's not supported by the facts. Going to the audiotape of the January 12, 2012 budget meeting, Township Assessor James Tyge was unequivocal that the data showed that the only way to address unfairness across the township was to do a reassessment or to do a revaluation. This council heard that request, and this council did not act on that request. But individual council members did act. In addition to an appeal that had been previously filed by Mr. Stern, shortly after the January 2012 revaluation request, Deputy Mayor Gussin filed an appeal on his home, and Mr. Katz filed at least three appeals on three different properties that he owns in Teneck. All three of those council members saw that their assessments were unfair, but didn't see that this unfairness cut across all of Teneck. To date, over the past four years, this failure to do a prompt revaluation has cost $265 million in ratables, $6 million in tax appeal losses, and hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees to attorneys and appraisers. There are 4,000 homeowners who filed successful appeals, but there are still 7,000 property owners who have not had the benefit of filing an appeal, people who have been hit with the full impact of the almost 15% increases in the municipal tax rate over the past four years and the almost 6% tax increase last year alone. Jason Castle and I have hosted 100 of those 7,000, we made a start, to help them learn how to file tax appeals on their own. Tomorrow night at the Rota Center, we will hopefully get some fraction of the remaining 6,900 people at 6:30 and 8:00 o'clock and show them how they can help file those tax appeals and how they can address at least some small portion of that unfairness. I hope that I and other members of the public can get an explanation for why some council members were able to see that their individual properties had been unfairly assessed, but had been unwilling to heed Mr. Tyge's request that we do a complete and full revaluation or reassessment, do that at lower cost, do that sooner, and save this township millions of dollars. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Dr. Rashin?
Thank you. Dr. Alex Rashin, Teneck. My questions will be commencing a number of things. One of them was mess-up, was at last meeting, was this... One of them was mess-up, was at last meeting, was this budget item of $400,000 for finishing the project was connecting the public police building with municipal building. The thing is that it was obviously, well, just mess-up because Eastern voted against the project completely, and all of a sudden, when there was a vote on amendment to completely cut $400,000 from the budget, he voted no. The problem is that the amendment was introduced in the format of Roberts Rules of Order, and basically, that's how it is, how it goes according to Roberts Rules. From what I know, from many, many previous councils, our council does not follow Roberts Rules of Order. However, apparently, Eastern didn't understand what's going on and voted wrong way, and therefore, when the original motion was voted for, he abstained because he didn't understand what's going on. So this, in my opinion, should be revoted because there was a mix-up. And furthermore, there were wrong statements on the results if we will just stop the execution of the contract if there are some changes. Because the point is that in every contract, as far as I know, you can consult the lawyer, there is in the contract the statement that if the council decides to change the project, it can do it, get estimate from the contractor, how much more will it cost, and during the time of delay when it's done, there are no fines. Now, the question is that normally, first of all, the question about asbestos, it's absolutely the defect of the initial plan by the architect who did it. And Architect was rehired despite my objections, for example, was cut short by Councilwoman Parker, that it's up to us to decide whether who's right, who's not. But the thing is that the facelift on the official entrance to the municipal hall is falling apart. Architect recommended the contractor, and the concrete is crumbling, the metal in the rails is rusted and leaking rust on the stuff, so it's bad metal, bad grade, and that was responsibility of Architect to watch on the quality. And it is still his responsibility, as was said by agreement with him. Now, how he can be responsible for doing what is there if one project he screwed up already? I think that should be removed, and the whole project should be completed within the budget. Because, well, what manager said, okay, we didn't have this cooperative agreement, that's why we didn't know how much. Normally, you reserve set money and tell us, it doesn't mean that we are going to use it all. If we get better contract or whatever it is, we'll use that. In this case, it was not done. The contract says no more than 3 million, so please fit into 3 million. And if you cannot fit into that, too bad. But again, it is possible at this point, for example, the second floor of a connector, for sure, is not necessarily first also. I tried to explain it to Lizette Parker at the time, she refused to meet me. So the thing is that, well, keep it as it was. If this manager decides that it is his fault, he did not foresee it, okay, he takes the pull on himself, actually, it's Architect. Now, coming with Architect, well, we had this problem with four-by-fours holding the windows of the basement, okay? And it's necessary to put, in my opinion, I told already, say some investigation, what's possible to do, but not by our Architect. He is not competent.
Thank you. Anyone else? It looks like Naomi is going to be the winner, by the way.
Jason Castle, Teaneck resident, private Teaneck resident, I want to make that clarification simply because I was named in an Oprah request last Friday, which found kind of interesting because the Oprah law does not require private citizens to disclose private information. And for me, it was somewhat disturbing that I was named in Oprah request requesting specific information that had to do with my military service record. So I had to see council because I've got a military clearance, and I had to figure out if I could actually disclose my military service record. I haven't done anything I'm ashamed of. But I didn't receive a copy of that, it was merely forwarded to me, but it came on the heels of innuendo that I might have something to hide in my military service record. I've heard that a few times. I've heard it, I don't want to levy any tax against anyone on the dais, but it was said to me that members of council who were up for reelection had basically alluded to the fact that maybe there was something in my military record that I was attempting to hide, and that that would be this, the other shoe was going to drop, so to speak. So, you know, upon advisement to council, my own attorney, even though it wasn't provided to me directly because I'm a private citizen and Oprah request don't apply to me, I've got my military service record, and I'm going to make it public record because I'm able to do so because my security clearance has elapsed. And I was told that there's nothing in here, except for what was redacted, that shouldn't be on public record. So it's been redacted. It goes from boot camp all the way to the day I got out of the service. There are a couple of citations from generals and lieutenant colonels and colonels, a couple of meritorious promotions and documentation that I helped with the detail that buried the late President Ronald Reagan. So I don't want there to be any innuendo or any conjecture or any question that my military service record might come into question. So with the permission of the attorney, I'm going to give this to...
I'm sorry, I already had responded to the applicant, advising them that if they want to make application for their military records, they need to contact the Bureau that's responsible for that. It's not our agency. So I'm not going to vote something...
I stopped the clock with Mr. Castle's five minutes isn't up, so I stopped the clock.
You're not going to vote something?
There's no back and forth. I stopped the clock, Mr. Castle. You may continue.
Thank you. So I want that to be the last thing in question for me as a council candidate, and I hope, as Mr. Stone said, that those documents there are at least the beginning of documents that we've requested. I don't think that they're for me because I requested mine to be in electronic form so that it wouldn't incur any paper costs. And as a matter of fact, I received a correspondence from the Clerk that says, "Please be further advised that the review of such emails by legal counsel will result in the township incurring significant legal expenses. Due to the extraordinary expenditure of time and effort involved to accommodate your request, as the township custodian of records, I find that a special service charge is reasonable and may be required that it may be received prior to the completion of this request. When a special service charge is determined, you will be notified, and such notification will be provided to you within the extended deadline." So I haven't received notification of a special service charge. My documents were requested in electronic form. Today does mark the 60th day. I'm still awaiting a number of records. I've received to date petitions for all council candidates except for Councilman Stern, so that has not yet been provided. But I just wanted, you know, as I'm endeavoring to do this, to be a member of your governing body, to work with all of you collectively, who will be there after the next election, I don't mind disclosing documents that no one on the council would have been able to receive or no member of the public because of a security clearance. They've been redacted electronically, and I want to provide them to the record, and if you don't feel comfortable taking them, then I'll publish them myself, but I don't want that to be in question. If you want to attack me for something, if you want your friends to attack me for something, if you want your colleagues to attack me for something, make it something of substance, not something in which I serve my country honorably, I serve my country understanding that the ultimate sacrifice could be my life, and I would give that life for any one of you. All right? So I'm somewhat frustrated, I'm somewhat angered, but just to clear up the record, this is my military service record, and anyone who'd like to have it, I'm happy to make a copy for you. Thank you.
Naomi?
I'm not sure I'm able to follow that.
If you choose not to, you can have a seat.
Well, I'll try. Couple of things. These Oprah wars or whatever people have been calling them, I think it involves just a lack of open deliberations by this council, and I think a lot of that, especially on the budget, is a lack of workshops. You never have any time to really sit down among yourselves and share your ideas about issues. So the thought is, maybe you're doing it through emails, maybe you're doing it on the telephone, because there's nowhere in public that you're holding discussions about important issues. And so people want to know how those issues came about and what your deliberations were on them. I think that's part of the Oprah situation. I have a question, I don't know if I have to Oprah this, is when did this council stop holding workshops? And who was on the council when this happened? Because Teaneck used to hold two regular council meetings and two workshops a month, and then it stopped. Stopped cold. And what concerns me is that you're mentioning that it's going to incur legal fees because the council wants the attorney to look at their emails, to be sure that there's nothing in them that should... That's the problem of your contract with your attorney. That's really where your problem is in terms of cost. Depends on what the contract says. In other towns, there'd be no extra cost for that. So you really need to look at that as well. Also, somebody said that the acting engineer recommends himself for projects. Doesn't that sound strange to you guys, girl, lady, woman? It does sound a little odd to me. Also, a friend of mine sent me a letter that she got a public notice about sewers and that they want to come into her house, and she was a little... I don't know if I got the letter, my husband probably commented it, I have no idea. But she feels uncomfortable about just having somebody come in and, you know, search her house for leaks or whatever. So I think you, you know, she wanted to know what the relationship to the town was, and she was a little concerned about that. And then I have another question about the recycling. I was told that some towns, now I don't know if this is correct, is still collecting all plastic and other things that we have been told are not to be collected anymore. Now, I'm assuming that our contract with the people that are doing our recycling included those things, like plastic bags, the contract said that. So now, are they allowed to just say, we're not going to collect that anymore? Maybe we should be looking for another company to do the recycling that will collect everything. So people are concerned about that, about all those plastic bags that we have to throw away. And you didn't give the date of the garage sale, you just said the sign-up day was a certain day, so you can do that. And then I'll wait till I have a comment about the mayor, who was about 12 years old when the Glen Point project was raging, that he would then make this definitive statement about people who were against the project are now living there. People were not, the people that I know were not against the Glen Point project.
Thank you.
They were just against the high-rise.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, Goodwill Fair is now closed. Trying to address many of the questions, and we'll go in order. Dr. Hoffman raised several concerns about the VOTI sportsplex, and I think I'm going to start with his last concern as far as what Dr. Hoffman's been calling Phase Two or additional amenities for the field facility to include restrooms, picnic area, cover, canopy concessions, and equipment storage. I think this is something that we certainly have discussed in theory, but we have not begun the process of looking for a plan, looking for stakeholder input specifically from the leagues that will utilize those facilities and from residents at large. But I think that's something that we should start taking a look at so that this can be a part of 2015 capital budgeting, and we can address what revenue is available and will be available in 2015 from the Municipal Open Space Recreation Historic and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund. So if we can start working on that, and anyone else have anything that they want to have included other than that list in that project? Because I think, again, the fields are certainly coming along excellently, they look beautiful, it's going to be a tremendous asset and resource to our community, but it's certainly not done. There's other things that ultimately can be improved upon surrounding the amenities. So if there's anything else, anyone? Okay, so Mr. Manager, if we can begin the process of putting together conceptual plan and ultimately leading to an RFP for the additional facilities of the field?
Okay, right now, one of the first things we need to do is issue that RFP to hire an architect to work with us. We have two major projects going right now, two large projects, and until we get the VOTI, when we get VOTI Park done and it's sufficiently done, that's when I anticipate we'll, I'll come forward to council and get that...
Ultimately, we're to take possession of the field legally at some point in the middle of May, is that correct?
Yeah.
So I think, obviously, you know, six weeks or so seems a reasonable time to wait, but certainly don't want to be, you know, back on our heels and not have time to have this appropriately considered in the 2015 capital budget. As far as issues of, and I think his first and second point are related as far as the management and ownership of those fields, from field security and taking care of our investment to managing the facility and best utilizing our investment. I think we had discussed in our budget meetings on at least two occasions, looking at the civil service title, Park Ranger versus Special One, Special Two, or some other type of security or caretake personnel. And I think ultimately, it does not appear that any position like that is going to be funded in the 2014 budget. But we have a $3 million investment, and we need to make sure that it stays safe. Is, you know, police overtime, recreation department staff, a combination of the two of them? How do we foresee for at least this year... How do we foresee, for at least this year, or the remainder of 2014, do you have a plan in place, or are you in the process of, of putting together a plan for managing and securing the facility?
Well, initially in preparing the budget, my plan was, as, as we discussed in, in our budget deliberations, to have that additional position, so that we could, we could cover the field and properly manage the field. I'm, I'm going to look at alternatives, I mean, if we, if we use overtime, then we'll need to increase our overtime budget. But we'll have to, to come to some conclusion prior to the opening of the field, because I think it's very important that someone be present during the use of these fields, some township official needs to be present. If you bring gum on this field, or if you leave a plastic bottle on this field, it will damage the field, and, and someone has to be there to deal with those issues.
How are other municipalities dealing with it? Because in Monville, they don't have a park ranger, or a Special One or Special Two office in there.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be Special One and Special Two, that's something that we discussed, that we wanted to have the person under the auspices of the police department, to, to have more, you know, enforcement authority, and have the police to back them up. But I'm sure that there, there are alternatives to that, but they all require, you know, a source of funding.
Right. My, my concern, I think, right now, is, is before the use, the opening of the field, there's been, I think, several incidents of, of people using the field, letting themselves onto the facility now, and how is the site secured today? Right, there is fencing on it, is there not a lock on it? Who has the key to the lock? What are we doing to?
Yeah, I was, I was there today, I, I, I went through the facility today. There's gates, the construction workers were there, working, gates were open, the facility was not locked. The facility right now is under the control of the, of the contractor, and we have not received delivery of, of the, of the facility yet. So we're contacting the, the contractor and telling him to lock the facility. We think that it's appropriate for him to do that. If there's any damage when we do our final inspection, that contractor's going to be responsible for fixing it, or we're not going to take delivery and make our final payment.
Now, a couple other, a couple other issues.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yeah.
Now that the sun is coming out a little bit more, can, can you arrange for anyone on the council that wants to go with you to, for a tour?
Absolutely, I can arrange that, and the council on a tour.
Great.
I was there today, and it is an amazing.
I've got an amazing feedback.
To the township, it is amazing.
Is there any way that we can look at, I know that the field is going to be high demand amongst TNEC residents, but ways in which we can increase revenue to kind of offset the cost of security, whether it be banner sponsorships through businesses in town. You know, I just think adding another position that the residents have to pay for is a bit much to ask for at this time.
Yeah, so we had talked briefly, you know, I think before, before we voted to finalize the, the process, that, that there certainly were revenue opportunities. Again, whether it's advertising, like the banner policy we have in place now, that can be extended, or, or facilities rental, as, you know, this may be able to host tournaments and other higher level play. So there, there certainly are, are opportunities, I think, I think from the Parks Playgrounds and Recreation Advisory Board perspective, we have discussed with, with Glenn Crockett, as far as finalizing the fee schedule for, for field rentals, and, and the priority policy, as far as who gets first dibs on the fields. So those are in process now, and, and those policies will be in place when the, when the field finishes.
Do we have any idea what the demand is going to be at this point now?
We, we know that there is going to be significant demand.
For residents?
For, for, for residents, but most specifically, the, the built-in demands, or the organic demand of TNEC junior football, and, and TNEC junior soccer, and then the next tier of users, folks like Stingrays and other organizations that are not 100% TNEC kids, and then outside organizations. So, you know, we have that same sort of priority ranking order, that's a policy decision of council, that has been, I don't know that, that anyone has concern about changing that, that priority rank order. It definitely places, you know, first and, first and foremost consideration for official township sports leagues that are 100% TNEC kids, and then down to the 80% threshold, and then outside organizations.
Also, I've met with Ms. Crockett today on that issue, so we're finalizing fee schedule, we're looking at the priority use, and trying to prepare an ordinance for, for the council to look at.
Okay. And then as far as Dr. Hoffman's request or suggestion about a full-time rec department position of facilities manager, I think ultimately, you know, this, this first year, we're going to, we're going to get a feel for exactly that demand, exactly how much of a new strain it's going to put on, you know, our, our scheduling. However, prior to these fields being built, there were two fields at VOTI. After this being built, there's two fields at VOTI. So there's still a finite number of hours that the, the field can be permitted for, and a number of opportunities for, for people to use. The field will always be in better condition than it was in the past, but there's still that same finite amount of field space. So I think, you know, certainly we can, we can look at that, and that's something that, I think at this point, you know, doesn't seem like it can be accommodated in this budget, but again, for, for 2015 budget. So if we can, if you can also have a conversation with Glenna regarding monitoring this initial process, so that if there is any additional staff requirement, that we can document why and how, and be able to justify that for, for 2015 budget. Okay. To address Dr. Powers, and I think Mr. Stone also mentioned it, as far as the, the financial, annual financial statement, what is the status of that document?
That's, I'm still working through issues with the CFO on that document. We've experienced some significant staffing issues within the, within the tax office, and we're recovering from those issues, and it, it's created serious issue. I'm not at liberty to say what those issues are, but we're working through, and I'm, I'm doing my best to get that done through CFO, so.
At this point, do you have any time estimate? Is it a day, is it a week, is it a month? Do you have, I mean, some, some handle on it?
It's, I mean, I don't, I don't want to say a day and then not have it, but I understand the importance of it. I understand the importance of it, I understand the importance of getting it right. I'm looking at all of our alternatives, I understand what the council wants, I understand what the council wants with the budget, and we're looking at all of our alternatives on, on how we could possibly reduce the budget, and this annual financial statement plays into that. So I'm working on it with the CFO, and I'm going to try to get it to the council as expeditiously as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's clear that, that there is a sense of urgency, that our resources are limited at this point due to personnel issues, and, you know, we, we want it, and the public deserves it as, as quickly as possible. As far as running out of time on the remediation of Green Acres funding, I'm not entirely sure what, what Dr. Powers is, is talking about there, but I do want, if you can, confirm to us where the project is, and maybe at this point, we can start like a, a weekly update on the status of the project, the status of the funding, the status of the remediation, so that.
Let, let me just, let me just add this. This is a project, like any other project that we do in TNEC, okay? We have personnel dealing with the issues of, of completing the project, monitoring the contractor, trying to get everything installed on time. We understand the, the deadline for filing and drawing down on the grant. We initially sent Green Acres a letter a while back, and requested an extension on the grant, and they told us, when we do need that extension, they will give us an extension. So I'm prepared, I have it on my calendar, I'm aware of how much money we're going to get from them, and I will file the extension if we need the extension. So the council doesn't have to worry about whether or not we're going to draw that down, we're, we're prepared to draw it down. It's, we're not in a rush to, to get the money. It is, we do projects all the time where we get reimbursed, and this goes through the normal process of, of reimbursement. So we're trying to move the contractor forward, weather slowed us down, we have that one area where the lid needs to be removed, the engineers looked at it, and it has to be removed at the appropriate time, it can't be moved, removed when it's all wet. So we're moving this through the process.
Okay. Next, next item that had concern for me, and probably for some of my colleagues, and maybe certainly some of our former colleagues, and I'm not, I'm not going to put the attorney on the spot now, but I think it may be appropriate for, for us to have a decision on obligations of former council members to maintain documents that may be public record or Oprah requestable. Some of us, in a couple months, may be former council members.
Our office will not apply to council, former councilwoman.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking as, should I be a former council member on July 1st, what my obligations going forward then would be to maintain?
We will render a formal opinion to council.
Mr. Rose raised a question about Resolution D as far as budget transfer. Mr. Manager, if you can explain the public employee retirement system and the police and fire retirement system?
Those are just annual payments in both of those retirement systems. When you're operating under a temporary budget, you have to have an emergency appropriation to increase the budget to allow for these payments. So it doesn't mean we have an emergency.
No, these are making our standard contributions to both pension systems, and this is the tool to do it until the budget is finalized.
Correct.
Okay.
On Mr. Rose's comments?
I still have several others to answer.
From Mr. Rose?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As far as the website calendar, I know I've noticed some, some issues in the past, but I think certainly Election Day should be on the, on the municipal calendar, if we can double-check that. And then also, if there are any tools we can use, I think there is, you can put your address in and find out what local voting district you're in, at the state level, I don't know if that's something we can, you know, sort of copy a link to on our site, but if we can have some resource for residents, so that they can identify not only what their district number is, but what their, what their voting location is.
I think we do better than that. We send a sample ballot to every single person's house.
Right.
With that information on it.
No, I understand that, but can we also put it up on the website? I think, you know, even if it's just a matter of listing, you know, all the addresses and streets that are in each district, but I think that there are, there's smarter technology where you can just put in your address and get your voting location. So if we could, if we could work on doing that.
And it's a simple link.
Yeah.
It's not something that should be complicated, it's a simple.
Okay, we'll, we'll look and see if we can do it.
So I think, I think that'll be, that'll be pretty straightforward. As far as the, the take-back, that's for prescription medication. I don't know what link you saw, but I know I forwarded it to my mother, and she was able to, to read it and, and get the information. So I don't know if we have maybe two links, one of them works, one of them doesn't, but if we can verify the, the details on that. If residents, if residents have old, out-of-date, or unused prescription medication, that should not be thrown in the garbage, for a whole host of reasons, from environmental impact to potential for abuse, et cetera. The police department, through the County Prosecutor's Office, offers a drug take-back program, so that the drugs can be disposed of safely and appropriately. Regarding Mr. Stone.
Wait, before you go to Mr. Stone, can I speak on Mr. Rose?
Sure.
Okay, so, yeah, he brought up some points about the website, and at, at the last council meeting, I, I guess I announced or requested that if any residents have concerns about our website, and what else they think should be on there, if they could email me or send us, you know, feedback. I have not, at this point, heard anything back, although I did see today some type of press release saying that some of this information is not readily available. But once again, it's not, you know, I think it's more grandstanding, I don't think they're looking to fix this problem, because I have not been got. I, I don't know if any council member received any feedback of what else we can put on there to make things more user-friendly. You know, as I mentioned, that I think that this is something that we should dedicate the resources for, but we need to get a little more specific, you know? I don't know if all of that was supposed to be on the website, but once again, if anyone makes this announcement to the people sitting here, and to the ones that are watching at home, and anyone on the report, if there's any items that you feel that should be on there, if you can please send us an email, so we can start collating it, putting, making a list, and then figuring out how we can tackle it to make it as user-friendly for our residents as possible.
From Mr. Stone's question, and I'll answer this personally, I did file a tax appeal. I had my house appraised for a home equity line of credit, and my appraisal came in significantly lower than my, my assessed value, far greater gap than the town-wide average, which triggered the county requiring us to have a, a revaluation. And so I think that every homeowner, or every property owner's purview to protect themselves from, from unfair taxation is certainly appropriate. To call, to call me out specifically, and somehow insinuate that I've done something wrong by not calling for a town-wide revaluation, but appealed my own taxes, I think it's, I think it's disingenuous, I think it's, I think it's dirty. And I will close my comments on this with the following: I believe very strongly that tax avoidance is probably the single most patriotic American principle. It is the founding principle of our country, and so our ability to use legal measures to ensure that we're not unfairly taxed is the right of every single resident. And so I do not, I do not regret, nor am I ashamed of, the fact that, that I tried to protect the interests of, of myself and my family and our home. Dr. Rasheen raised questions about Robert's Rules of Order, and just want to clarify, there's many different ways in which meetings are governed and operated, from corporate boardrooms, to volunteer organizations, houses of worship, and the TNEC Township Council. Many use Robert's Rules of Order, we do not. Robert's Rules of Order, for the purpose of a governing body like this, is cumbersome, and can be unnecessarily burdensome to, to adhere to. In the TNEC Township Code, there is the Rules of Order for our meetings, which govern the way in which we operate, but it is, while in some cases it's similar to Robert's Rules of Order, it is very separate and distinct from that. As far as whether a council member understood or didn't understand what they should have voted or didn't vote, obviously that's the, that's the purview of the individual council member. And so I think there, there was, I think, maybe enough confusion with what may have been a triple or quadruple negative as to what a yes or no vote meant. I want to just clarify, if I can, are there four members of council that want to support the $400,000 additional expenditure on the, the old police station renovation and connector?
We went through that earlier.
I, I want to clarify, because as Dr. Rasheen pointed out, our discussion and the vote could use some clarification.
I think I was pretty clear that I was not supportive of the $400,000.
I wasn't.
Okay, and I, and I still remain, I still remain clear with that position.
So the question is, are there four members of council, or I should say, we have five here tonight, so three, so three members of council that want to see, well, he's not in the room right now. Are there three members of council that want to see that $400,000 expenditure, or appropriation up to but not to exceed, to see that approved, or do we want that removed from the capital budget? So if we want that $400,000 included, if I could get just a quick show of hands before a motion is made? Anyone?
This is not a form of vote.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just getting the consensus of, getting the standing of where council is on this. It doesn't, it doesn't seem that there's a majority of council that, that want to spend that, and so I think the, the vote that was taken at our last meeting appropriately reflects that, that council does not support that additional $400,000.
I, I didn't get that impression. We talked. We talked about it.
Mm-hmm.
And I talked about taking the $75,000 off.
Eighty-five.
Whatever, whatever number it was.
It was eighty-five.
And, and the rest of it passed in the last time we met.
Correct.
Are we going to redo it again?
Five thousand was, no, it wasn't.
Correct. So, the question that I just asked was, does anyone support the 400? And the answer is no. No one supports the 400. Now, this is the next question. As to the amended vote to take out the $85,000 that was specifically in question of the 400. And there was support to include the.
Deputy Mayor, when you use the word vote.
We voted at our last meeting.
On a formal resolution, on a formal capital item?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, this was, this was as to be included, whether or not to be included in the capital budget.
You had a formal resolution before you?
No.
No, we didn't have a formal. They agreed.
So this is a token consent?
Yes.
For the manager to ultimately.
No, a motion was made and a vote was taken.
I don't see it in the minutes.
A, a motion was made by Dr. Pruitt and a vote was taken. A motion was made by one of you guys about the $400,000.
Correct.
All together.
Or, no, an amendment, amendment to the original motion.
You didn't take formal action. It was not, you don't have.
No, we instructed the manager to.
To present it, to present it.
It's in the process of finalizing a budget proposal.
So it's not a binding vote until you present it?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to be clear.
That's why, that's why I think there's some.
What you're talking about is consensus at this point.
Yes, there's, there's some confusion because ultimately, that line is going to be a part of the final budget that this council votes on in an official way. And we're using that consensus building to instruct the manager in his final preparations of the budget.
Okay.
Right?
I want us to ask clear.
Okay.
I don't like it, okay? I think, no, I'm, I'm going to speak. I think that we passed whatever number it was the last time we met. I don't think we can sit up here from the seat of our pants and redo it all over again. Now, if you want to get into a discussion of the budget, that's not even on the agenda. The capital budget per se is not on the agenda. There's something about budget. It's under old business.
Yeah, the, the budget is absolutely, and as we've instructed the clerk to include the budget in old business until the budget's passed.
That's true, but we, we have already, the last time we met, we agreed to go forward with, with the amended budget to complete that building. My, my proposal was to take out the $85,000.
Correct.
And, and that's where it was left. Not to take out the whole thing.
Right. I, I understand that, but that wasn't an official vote. That was direction for the manager in his preparation of the budget.
Good, Premier Mayor, what? Why do we vote if it doesn't count? I thought we voted.
We, we, we take polls on council for many different reasons depending on a specific issue.
We did have a roll call. No, we had a roll call.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, can I have a question for the attorney?
Yeah.
Um, this really is not going to get resolved until we actually vote on the capital budget.
That's all right. That's, that's the point. These votes are more polls, straw polls, et cetera. It's clear, these are not official actions.
No, this is to provide guidance for the manager until such times we're actually voting on the budget.
Their last week was a poll.
Yeah.
It's not a vote in the sense that it binds, that binds the manager or binds the future council, et cetera.
Correct. So I, I think it's clear that no one supported $400,000 and that the way we left it at our last meeting was that a majority of council supported leaving 315,000 of that line in the capital budget. As your guidance, we prepare the, the final budget. And I said, this was all just to clarify Dr. Rashin's question that he and/or the public and/or members of council may not have understood that process. So I hope this shed some clarity on it, that that was not an official vote, that was not an immutable act. And that was simply to, to give ongoing guidance to the manager in the budget preparation.
How about the clarity on the one of two dump trucks used that were purchased? Can we get rid of one of them?
Uh, if we can, right now, we're still commenting on good and welfare. If we can hold that until our old business discussions on the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see. Ms. Kramer asked when we stopped holding, holding workshops. Jamie, if you could, if you could go back through the, through the record and identify that, and this is something that Ms. Kramer has, has raised many times, that has been addressed many times, but I hope this is the, the final time that there will be any lack of understanding as to what happened. Under the former operating procedure of council, council was prohibited from taking official action at workshops. You couldn't actually hold a vote. And so, what you could do is go through this sort of Rube Goldberg procedure of voting to vote.
Who's Rube Goldberg?
Who's Rube Goldberg?
Rube Goldberg.
Goldberg.
Rube Goldberg.
Goldberg.
Yes.
Goldberg.
Goldberg.
Okay. I didn't know what Rube Goldberg was. Either, either way, the, the council at the time decided to change our format of our agenda to accommodate discussion at every meeting and not put discussion into a meeting where then action could not be taken. And so, if you will look at our agenda, number one, we have good and welfare, where the public gets to discuss issues. You have, in our format, rules of operation. Any council member can discuss any item they choose prior to good and welfare. Then we have, going through our, our agenda, old business, where we can discuss ongoing items. Then we have new business, where council members can request new items to be discussed. We have communications, where we can discuss ongoing gathering of information. We have committee reports. And then we have a specific section for new council listed items for discussion and deliberation on issues. There's literally five or six times in every meeting where every function of what used to take place at a workshop takes place at our current meetings, but we're not restricted by not being able to vote on those issues. And so, ultimately, this is a more streamlined, smoother and more efficient way of being able to deliberate and vote at the same meeting. This has been discussed many times. You may not like it, but please don't tell me you don't understand it because this has been discussed at least a dozen times over the, over the past three or four years. But if we can verify the exact date, and then.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah.
It was either 4/11/2007 or 9/4/2007. That's when the ordinance was amended. I don't know which one, which one covers exactly the same because the previous amendment was back in 2005. I think this took place in 2007.
It took place while it was in council, so it couldn't have been 2005.
2007 then.
It wasn't 2007, I don't believe.
Ordinance number four, ordinance number 4002.
I think it was, yeah, definitely, because I believe Mohammed and Barbara want the council to change.
So if it's 2007, that's what it was.
Okay.
No, they were elected in, they were elected in 2006.
Yeah, they were, it had to be after 2008.
It had to be 2009.
Well, the, according to the book.
If we can, if we can verify.
According to the book, the book was last amended in 2007.
Okay, if we can verify. Uh, Ms. Kramer also brought up the question of notices that went out to residents regarding inspections for water and sewage. We had, and I, I believe you were here that evening, Ms. Kramer, I could be wrong. We had a presentation by a representative from the Bergen County Utilities Authority regarding wastewater. And one of the problems that we in many older communities have, much of our infrastructure, stormwater runoff and sanitary sewer are 80, 90 years old. The integrity of those systems has, over the years, degraded. And one of the problems that we have is we get a bill and it's a significant line item in our budget every year from Bergen County Utilities Authority for the treatment of wastewater. The problem is that because of so many leaks in our sanitary sewer system townwide, rainwater goes into the ground and goes into those pipes. And good, clean rainwater mixes into the sanitary sewer system, goes to Bergen County Utilities Authority and is treated as though it were wastewater. And so, ultimately, we pay every year more wastewater sewage charge than we should because much of the water that goes to BCUA from Teneck is actually good, clean rainwater that's seeped into the sewer system.
Mr. Brown, I have a question. Mr. Brown, what do we pay BCUA roughly a year now?
It's around $4 million.
It's a, it's a pretty significant line item in the budget. And because of the engineering, you know, review that's been going on, Teneck was identified as one of the towns that could benefit from improvements to the integrity of the, of the wastewater system. And so, by doing this, we're be, going to be saving money. And ultimately, I think what the, the original impetus from the presenter talked about is that the Bergen County Utilities Authority wastewater treatment facility is, is almost at capacity. And so, if we can reduce the total capacity burden, then we won't collectively in the county be responsible for funding the construction of new or additional, but ultimately unnecessary wastewater treatment facilities. If we can minimize how much water gets there, the current capacity will meet our needs. So this is, this is, you know, environmentally sound, it's financially sound. I think homeowners should feel comfortable in, in allowing the inspectors to, to come in to, to take a look, ultimately, just going to see where we can save water and, and save money. So, I think, you know, every property in town should have gotten that letter. And if there's any specific questions, by all means, reach out to the manager's office. But I would encourage residents to avail themselves of this opportunity to improve our, our wastewater system.
Is there a article in the suburban?
I, I don't know. Maybe, maybe there's a reporter from the suburban I hear who'd be interested in covering the issue. And then, let's see, what else do we have? As far as the recycling, what other towns, depending on the timing of their contracts, whether they're still allowed to accept every commodity or not, the, the marketplace for, for certain commodities has dried up largely due to legal or legislative issues in China and what, what waste they're willing to accept, which is by far the largest consumer of many of the now not, no longer recyclable items. And the cost of sorting, there's several different issues that, that all culminated together, but.
And I just want to add that with recycling, many other towns may still be accepting the material, but the vendor is putting it in the trash. So what we wanted to do was stop our DPW personnel from collecting this material, delivering it to the vendor, and the, the vendor toss it in the garbage.
And then ultimately, reducing the fees paid to us for the good recyclable, saleable waste. So, if we put items in recycling that don't have a market for them, we get charged back for it and that waste just gets transported back and forth a few times before it ultimately ends up in the, in the regular garbage stream anyway. So this is, this is something that, it's unfortunate that there isn't a market for every potentially recyclable plastic, but that's the, the state of the, the commodities market today. And I think that's all the comments I have. Anyone else have anything they wanted to touch on? Ellie? Dr. Pruitt?
Yeah, I want to. I want to respond to Mr. Powers' resignation. The Park Project has gone through many, many changes. And having him on that committee has saved Teneck a lot of money. I would request that Mr. Powers stay with it until we finish the project. And whatever, whatever that committee is called that Dr. Hoffman has or whatever structure it is, I think that Mr. Powers has been an asset and he should kind of hang in there until we get through. I appreciate what he's done.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor, if I, if I may comment on proposed Resolution B.
Yes.
I don't know if 15 was a typo and it was meant to be 14, but the council, this council by resolution could only extend the life of this advisory board by resolution to co-terminus with the termination of this council. It's not a, it's not an amendment of the ordinance. So therefore, you could only extend this advisory board by resolution through June 30th, 2014, and therefore, your appointments could only be to 2014. Dr. Powers' letter specifically indicates he's, submitting his resignation because the term, it says the term expiring June 30th, 2015. I don't know if he was, you know, if that's what he was concerned about and the amendment might change that, or if he's still unhappy on, he could submit a different letter of resignation if you amend the resolution to read 214.
To correct that, that.
To correct that, as well as add, and the advisory board is extended till June 30th, 214. You could do that as an administrative amendment and then if Mr. Pow, Dr. Powers wants to submit a new letter of resignation.
Or rescind his letter of resignation.
Well, I would say the letter will be null and void if you amend it to 214, but there'll be updated.
Well, I don't know that that's why, his, his letter's not clear as to the, the reason, so.
The, the reason says.
What I would like to do is, if I can, if we can amend Resolution B to correct the typo to coincide with the ending of this council on June 30th, 2014. If Dr. Powers chooses to rescind his resignation, I would, I would be willing to accept that rescission. If not, then, then it stays as it is.
You're also adding a sentence to say the advisory board is extended to June 30th, 214.
Correct. All right. So.
The resolution will be as amended.
As amended for Resolution B. Congressman Stern, did you have any further good and welfare comments?
Uh, no, I did not actually. It was really something to do with, with Dr. Powers' resignation. I was just wondering whether in fact he's not going to be on the board, whether, whether we will be interviewing for replacement. That's the question I had. But now that we're changing the expiration of both the terms of the individuals being reappointed as well as the term of the, of the board itself, you know, that question is now moot if we're going to leave Dr. Powers' name on there, which I would support.
Well, again, I don't know that he would want, I don't know that that's the reason why he, he's so suspicious. Ultimately, let's make the change. I'm going to choose this to rescind his resignation.
And it's up to Dr. Powers.
I suspect that we will hear from Dr. Powers once the resolution is passed. Correct. At some point. Okay. Was that?
I do have a question about the status of tax refunds.
Status of tax refunds, still processing some. Some tax refunds have gone out.
Do we have an idea about how many went out? How many are in process?
Approximately half, approximately half have gone out. We anticipate that probably the other half will go out this week.
This week?
By Friday. Yeah, we're hoping to get those out by Friday.
And is that done by resolution or because Mr. Powers indicated and received a check?
Is it done by resolution? Well, any, any check, you know, will eventually come past the council to, to be approved. So the CFO could be waiting to put them all on a list and, and confirm.
Can we verify the check that Dr. Powers received was cut for this refund purpose? That it was on a bill list? That it was appropriately recorded and documented? And if we can, if we can look into that? And, no, because if he got a check that wasn't on the bill list, I don't know, maybe it wasn't on the bill list and he just missed it. Maybe it wasn't on the bill list.
Can I, can I look into this?
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just talk to the CFO and, and double check that.
And then, if, if a check was cut that wasn't on the bill list, would you like us to look into how and why that happened and how and why that may have happened in the past in other instances? But if we can, if we can take a look at, if you can go over the CFO on that?
All right, I'll speak to CFO.
Was that, did you have anything else?
No, that was all.
Okay. Yes.
The ordinance, the, the agenda with ordinance 4139, it was adopted on August 18th, 2009.
August 18th, 2009 is when we changed our meeting format to have all regular meetings and not workshop.
And the actual format was attached as, like, in front of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
The election dates are on the website.
Is it in the ca, is it on the calendar? If you go to the municipal calendar, is May 13th, does it have Election Day on?
It should because.
Well, when you say it's on the website, where is it that you see it?
Uh, it has its own sub-questions for the council meeting schedule. So it's, it's actually part of the council meeting schedule.
Okay. But Election Day isn't really part of council meetings, so it's.
But it's, no, I'll, I'll check it, I'll check it.
Yes. So if we can please put that on the general township calendar.
I just have one other comment that I want to make and my, this will be the last comment of this type that I'll make. You know, I, I understand that it's election season, and I understand that people are getting very passionate about where they stand on issu, on issues. But I would ask of my colleagues and those running in the audience that we not personally attack one another. I think that it's a shame that clearly upset Mr. Castle had to come in and defend his service to the country. And I don't think that any of us, considering the fact that we've never served our country in that way, should even question what he's done, because he could have served the ultimate sacrifice and not be here for our freedoms that we currently have. So I, you know, I keep it clean, keep it issue-based, let's not attack each other personally. I mean, I think we can do much better than that for TNEC.
Moving on, the consent agenda with resolutions B through I, I'd like to move that along with, we're going to be amending Resolution B to remove Dr. Powers' name.
No, we're not.
You're not, you're just amending it to fix the date to the 14th.
He made a comment, he made a request.
Let's leave the resolution as is. You're amending the date from 215 to 214 and adding the sentence that the advisory board is extended until June 30th, 214.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with Dr. Powers.
Fine.
The rest is about the powers.
And then the bill list and the amount of? Okay, do I have a second? I'll second.
Do you want to pull that for discussion separately? Okay. So we'll pull Resolution C separately for discussion and vote, so if we can have a roll call on the consent agenda.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Purley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes, to be abstention on the rest.
On the rest?
Yes, to...
Yes, to be, you said, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Katz?
Yes, to be, as in boy, abstention on the rest.
Yes, with an abstention on bill list item number 14-01719. Okay. We'll move Resolution C for the purpose of discussion. Dr. Prue, your question?
Yeah. Mr. Brown, could you tell us why we have a relationship with Texas?
Okay, so that resolution is for the township to join a co-op so that we can purchase the sewer camera. It allows us to purchase it at a price that previously bid and a preferred price, so that's the purpose of joining that co-op.
So we've joined a purchasing cooperative that includes the Houston-Galveston area council as the lead agency.
Yes.
In order simply for us to most cost-effectively source the sewer camera.
Correct.
Outstanding that, not only that that opportunity exists, but that there's information available to us that we can take part of every bit of cost savings wherever it's located around the country, so I think that's excellent. So do I have a second on Resolution C, Dr. Prue?
I'll second.
Outstanding. Roll call.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Purley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Gadsden?
Yes. Okay. Introduction of ordinances, and we've got two ordinances.
Ordinance number 9-2014, an ordinance amending Section 36-11.2 of Division 1 of Article 2 of Chapter 36 entitled Traffic of the Township Code, adding restricted on-street parking spaces for handicaps on a portion of Fairview Avenue. Ordinance number 10-2014, an ordinance amending Section 33-32 Special Improvement District, and Section 33-33 Downtown Business Improvement Zone of Chapter 3 Development Regulations of the Code of the Township of TNEC, to amend the boundaries of the Cedar Lane Special Improvement District and the Downtown Business Improvement Zone, and to exempt residential properties located therein from annual assessment.
And I have an ordinance summary I prepared for both of those, if you want to read it, if you want me to read it. Are you going to read it, Deputy Mayor? Or you want me to read it?
Yeah. So the, and again, this is, I think this was originally at Councilwoman Parker's request, and we've been doing now for a few months, but sort of cutting through the legalities, easy-to-understand explanation. Ordinance number 9-2014, at the request of the property owner, this is an ordinance that adds a restricted on-street handicapped parking space. Ordinance number 10-2014, residential property owners petition the township council at previous council meetings to remove all residential properties from the Cedar Lane Special Improvement District. Ordinance redraws the improvement district boundaries and excludes residential properties from the district. It also clarifies something in the past that wasn't spelled out, but township-owned properties that happen to fall within the district are exempt. And so it cleans up the group of commercial properties that are now being assessed for the special improvement district, which puts on things like Zumba in the square, in the farmer's market, in the Memorial Day Street Fair, and advertising promotions that benefit the Cedar Lane Shopping District. Okay.
And just for clarification, the board is aware that this change is coming? Fully aware?
The board is fully aware. The board has been aware for, I'd say, about a year now that we were going to take this, or that we were looking at it, leaning to taking this action, and this is a final culmination. Councilman Stern sits on as the council liaison, or council member on the board, and they've been informed all along.
I just want to...
No surprises.
I don't want a next meeting for them to come in and say they don't know.
They might not be happy, or they might not all be thrilled with it, but they're certainly aware of the process we're doing.
The unhappiness which is a result of the removal of approximately...
Seventeen thousand dollars?
Seventeen thousand dollars in their budget.
Excellent. Okay.
And just for the record, I will be abstaining from the ordinance, not because I don't support it, but because I didn't receive it until I walked in this evening.
So you're abstaining from introducing it?
Yes, exactly.
By the time it's up for adoption, you'll have had any opportunity to review and question anyone else. Okay. So we need a roll call on the introduction?
Actually, a motion?
A motion. So moved. Second, Councilman Stern?
Councilwoman Parker? Yes, I'm, no, oh, no, I didn't get either one. Abstain, and what am I doing? Abstaining, yeah, abstaining.
Councilwoman Stern?
Yes.
Councilwoman Purley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stewart?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Gadsden? Yes. Okay. Old item, old business, 2014 municipal budget and 2014 capital budget. Obviously, we jumped into a little bit of the capital budget to answer Dr. Rashin's question, but William, if you could give us a status update or where we're at as far as the preparation and introduction of the budget?
All right, so I think I gave a report on that previously. I'm still working with the CFO to see where we can come up with areas where we can possibly reduce the budget, we're still working on those issues. And, you know, we've discussed the various reductions that the council has wanted, I'm aware of them. I'm still working with department heads on overtime issues, so it's in progress. As I said, we've had some issues with staffing, which has really taken the CFO's attention away from our normal duties, and she had to focus more on the tax office at the time, but we're working through the process.
Has that situation improved, or is it still an ongoing difficulty?
It improved as of Thursday. So Thursday was the day when, you know, we had full staff there, there's no one out now, so things are getting back to normal.
We should be able to play a little catch-up now?
Yep.
Okay. Shared services, I know you had presented us with a list of suggestions from department heads for shared services?
Yep.
Do you want to discuss that?
Actually, I left my copy back here, but...
So we had several different recommendations. I have a copy of it. From the building department, as far as working with other communities on cloud-based software, the township clerk looking at partnering with the Board of Ed, using the new agenda management software that we're using to online file storage and things like that, from the finance department, we have a couple of suggestions for internal process, as well as looking at other agencies for BCUA sewer billing and other things like that, the fire department looking to share records management software with Hackensack or Inglewood, purchasing partnership with Hackensack for training apparatus, purchasing with Hackensack for driving simulators, health department to share code enforcement services with another community where there may be additional resources available. From the library, we've got opportunities where there may be some consolidation of smaller libraries, the efficiency in the system with now more than 85 separate member libraries in the buckle system, there might be efficiencies there based on the third-of-a-mill tax requirement, where we may be able to provide library services to other communities, to efficiencies in the police department, sharing range usage for certifying firearms qualification, to public works, working with the Board of Ed on several opportunities involving tree maintenance and removal, catch basin maintenance, plowing that we identified, I think, at one of our earlier meetings with Fram Wilson, as well as ball field renovation and maintenance, whether it's baseball fields or soccer fields, et cetera. From the purchasing department, looking at joining another purchasing cooperative, Huntington County, as well as the Houston-Galveston item we looked at tonight, and partnering with Fairleigh Dickinson to establish an internship program for political science majors interested in a career in government procurement. Township would receive, or potentially receive, free services while students gain experience. That might be a very interesting opportunity to look at, partnering with FDU for internships, as well as where there's space in programs, allowing non-residents to pay for a fee-based use of some of our summer youth programs, where historically they've only been open to TNEC residents, but if there's still space, then, you know, we can certainly accommodate additional revenue generation. So I think this is, these are some pretty good, you know, first steps as we're looking into opportunities, whether it's with, you know, neighboring municipalities, far-off, distant municipalities, or our own Board of Education. Based on this, is there, do you have a general follow-up schedule? Every item, you know, is different, so you can't all, I think, be held to the same deadline, but...
All right, so what I'm doing is, I'm currently working with Inglewood on some opportunities, some opportunities that really may bear fruit. We're looking at, when we get the sewer camera, sharing the use of that sewer camera, TNEC providing the manpower and the camera, sending our personnel out to other municipalities and charging a fee for the use of that camera. We're also looking at sign-making. I've met with managers from other towns, a lot of managers need signs. Inglewood's interested, Bergenfield's interested, and Northern New Jersey Community Foundation has provided a consulting service at their expense to study this issue. So we've already had a meeting with DPW to determine capacity, determine the potential costs, what profit can the township make on doing that, so some things are in the works, and we're seeing, and we're hopeful that they're going to bear fruit, so.
I think that the Fairleigh Dickinson suggestion that was brought up by purchasing, we could probably expand beyond just that department, and should be an agenda item at our meeting, when we meet with the president.
Yes.
Establishing a...
Right, maybe, because they offer a bachelor's in public administration.
Exactly.
So internships in the manager's office, the clerk's office, in other areas of operation, not just procurement.
Not just procurement.
Absolutely. Dr. Prue?
Mr. Brown, could you send us a kind of a summary of what, a description of what the sewer camera does? I'm kind of curious how you do that. Does it swim? I mean, what, how does it work? Just a piece of information if you can get that.
Okay, I'll get something soon. Actually, it's propelled, I believe it's propelled by, it might be propelled by water, but I'll get the description, I don't want to speculate. I'll get it.
Municipal court security, where are we at on that?
Municipal court security, I had a conference call with our labor attorney, and I just recently received a report on, so I have to review that report, and we're trying to move that forward.
Fire and police dispatch.
I've been working with Councilman Stern, we're trying to find a date that's suitable and convenient to take members of council up to the facility.
With some of the difficulties as far as scheduling and quorums of council and off-site meetings, if we can look at setting it up for two, three, and three groups, so we're not encumbered by the difficulties and tremendous complexity that a scheduling as an off-site public meeting.
Yep.
We can have two separate subcommittees of three and three go. Councilman Stern's obviously already familiar with the facility, so we can leave you out.
Happy to coordinate that. I don't really need to tour the facility, I'm there every day, so.
Okay. Moving on to...
Councilman, Councilman Katz?
Our ability to record meetings off-site.
You have to record the meeting, you have to open it to the public, you have to have comment, it's a, logistically, it's very difficult.
We have retreats.
Yes, you do, you have to have a certain thing, a retreat.
When was the last time we had a retreat? And this is one of the reasons why the retreat is very difficult to accomplish. The last retreat we had was probably in 2007, and that, and that meeting was not recorded and would not meet the current Open Public Meetings Act requirements. So it's cumbersome to deal with it, so we can simply break it up into two shifts.
Mr. Katz, just, you know, if anybody from the, I'm happy to arrange people from the public come visit as well. You know, once the council has been there, you know, if a group of people from the public want to come see the facility, you know, given enough notice and scheduling, I'm happy to arrange that, not a problem.
Okay. Communications, New Jersey League of Municipalities requests for action on interest arbitration cap.
Wait, I have a miscellaneous item. I just, well, I could wait till council is, I don't want to talk now. I just wanted to remind the public about the TNEC premiere of the Apple Mortgage Cake movie that's going to be shown at TNEC cinemas on April 10th at 7:00 PM. Anyone who's interested in getting tickets, the tickets are free. You have to go online, though, to brownpapertickets.com and print out a ticket prior to the movie date.
And April 10th is a Thursday night?
Yes, April 10th.
Next Thursday?
Next Thursday night, yes. We want to come out in strong numbers and pack the theater and show Angela's support. She's one of our own very TNEC residents, and I hope all council members will attend the reception prior to...
The reception at 7?
Six.
You have it at TNEC.
We're getting your invitations now.
Do you want to discuss it? New Jersey League of Municipalities requests for action on interest arbitration cap. So the 2% cap on interest arbitration, the law sunsetted yesterday. It had been voted on in the Senate and supported to be extended by the New Jersey State Senate. The Assembly, for whatever reason, was unable to hold a vote, and so the law has sunset. The League of Municipalities is requesting support for continuing the 2% interest arbitration cap. I think, is everyone familiar enough with it? Because I think it's something that we should do. Now that the law has sunset, it's, you know, simply a matter of urgency, as contracts are expiring, not just in TNEC but all across the state, that this has been a successful tool in keeping down wage inflation and municipal budget increases, and I certainly support the continuation of it. Do we have a majority of council that wants to...
I thought we sent a...
We sent one letter.
We sent the letter already, but that letter was based on presuming that there was going to be an Assembly vote on this. The Assembly vote hasn't...
No, we sent the letter this week, I just saw it.
Yeah, but the law, but the law then sunsetted. So our, yes, our letter...
That's fine.
Our letter did nothing because the law was allowed to sunset.
That's fine.
So now that it has sunset... So now that it has sunset, if we can request that the law, or a, you know, continuing law be created to serve the same effect, this is our second bite at that advocacy apple. Dr. Pruitt, you had a communication you wanted to discuss?
Yeah. There's a letter from Robert Weinberg about the Elm Avenue Municipal Parking Lot. There's some unhappiness about how that's being arranged. Have you done any follow-up on that, Mr. Brown?
This was a pilot program that was, we discussed at a council meeting, to install, council gave myself and Councilman Katz direction to work on this issue of establishing a pilot program to designate in three municipal parking lots, parking spaces reserved specifically for merchant parking. I met with Councilman Katz on this issue, I met with DPW on this issue. We developed a sign, the sign says reserve merchant, reserve for merchant parking permits only. We installed two of those signs in the Elm Street Municipal Lot, we installed one in the Beverly Street Municipal Lot behind Wells Fargo, and we installed one in the Orchard Street Municipal Lot. I later on did a follow-up, I looked to see if those spaces were being used. One of the spaces was used in the Elm Street Lot, one was vacant, I did this until like 11 o'clock in the morning, and I checked Beverly Lot, and I checked Orchard Street Lot, and there was no other use, those spots weren't being used. So we did what the council directed us to do, we installed spaces.
Can I respond also?
There's, Dr. Pruitt, Mr. Katz?
Yeah, so...
Dr. Pruitt, Mr. Katz, can I tell you what you want to do?
So, listen, I've been in constant contact with the Senator's office, and I certainly understand her comments. It's a pilot, we said it was a pilot from the beginning. A pilot by definition is not necessarily something permanent, we're something that we wanted to try, it's something that's different. She brought it to our attention, and it was a great suggestion. Our manager actually cut through any bureaucracy and did this as expeditiously as possible. But a pilot has certain phases, and the first phase is really a soft rollout, and a soft rollout is not to promote it to everybody just yet.
Yeah.
You know, and, I didn't get it, if I can get it, please. And I think the manager did a great job with that, and we're going to be soliciting feedback, and certainly we've got the Senator's suggestions, and we appreciate the suggestions. And certainly, as we start selling more merchant tags, we're going to start promoting it and explaining it, and seeing how this goes, and evaluate, and then come back to the council. And then the council can decide, oh, we've gone too many letters of complaints, so we've, you know, from residents, or from merchants, or from whatever it is, or, oh, this is great, and it's a real, how come we didn't think about this years ago? So I thank the Senator for bringing it to our attention, because it was her suggestion, and conversely, I thank the manager for taking that suggestion and running with it and cutting through bureaucracy and getting those signs up, and now piloting it and seeing how it goes.
Can we send her a response to her letter?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I would just like to have a response, you know, a response back to the Senator, so it looks like we're paying attention to what the problem is.
Acknowledging receipt of the letter, it's in our packet today.
Yeah.
Acknowledging receipt of the steps that have been taken by council and staff.
Any council member, it's listed a few different items that wanted to be done, I mean, no council member suggesting that we take down the signs and start the process from the beginning in order to...
Just respond.
Okay, just respond.
Can I just, can I just...
I'm only asking that when we get communications like that, do we respond back to the person so that they'll know we're thinking about them?
Okay, I just want to, if someone sends a letter to the mayor, okay, there's a great likelihood I may not even see that letter, okay? So if someone sends us a letter to the mayor, I expect, or if they send an email to the mayor, I expect that the mayor's going to respond, that...
But just to that...
I don't think I go to the council, if the council says to me, respond, I respond. I don't automatically respond.
But just to that point...
It's a bell that can't be unrung. We're now asking you to respond, so now we will.
Or Jamie could respond as the Secretary of the Government Body, I don't care who does, but...
I will respond, since, you know, I was involved.
Excellent. Okay, moving right along. Council-listed items. Councilman Katz, you've got quite a few.
Mayor.
The first one is the revaluation. As you recall, when we did this, I believe it was seven years ago, the same company that's doing it currently took a page out of the Bergenfield book of what not to do for a revaluation, and we actually had a very smooth, you know, seamless revaluation at the time, with more of an education process. I just want to make sure that we are doing the same.
We hosted a, we hosted four appraisal systems, a series of, I think it was four or six different public information sessions.
Right now they're only hosting one.
Was that?
Right now they're only hosting one.
Yeah.
I think we need to increase that number.
We anticipate, and we have planned to have probably five meetings. We're going to hold a central meeting, and then we're going to hold quadrant meetings.
That's a good idea.
So that is something, we're planning to do that, but we needed to get moving on this project.
Yeah, agreed, I just wanted to make sure...
We're going to expect five meetings.
Yes.
And actually, I don't even know what the number was last time, but whatever the recipe or ingredients was last time, what?
I think it was nine.
Honestly, I would suggest that we just copy it, it wasn't broke, I mean...
The only reason we say not copy it, because with nine meetings, there was one or two people at some of the meetings. The general meeting that we had, the initial general meeting, many people came, was well-attended, people got information. Also, you have, people have already been through this process, so they do have an understanding of the process.
People forget, unfortunately. And this is obviously something very, very serious, but if you can express the concern and see if they can try to be, mirror, or come close to mirroring what they did last time, whatever they did, I mean, they might not have only just done meetings, they might have done...
Well, last time, you know, we had this series of meetings, where the first meeting, we had maybe 150 people, it was only 100...
Yeah, it dwindled, and now it's good.
But it dwindled, so I think the final meeting, there were literally eight people in the row.
Right.
So, you know, mirroring exactly that may be actually a bit of overkill, but certainly, if we're hearing back that people still don't understand the process, or don't know what it means to let an appraiser into their home, to do the revaluation, all the questions that come about from it, I think, after we have the five that are on board, if there's still concern for lack of information or lack of opportunity to attend those, then we can look at it at that point.
Okay. The next item is the light rail. As you're reading in the papers, that there's other towns that are for the light rail, and there's other towns that are neighboring us that are against the light rail. TNEC is saddled with all the negatives of rail here in TNEC, and none of the positives. I reiterate that we are the largest commuting towns, I mean, Record did a story about this a few years ago, I assume the numbers are not too much different. If anything, to the contrary, we probably increased it, but we're the largest commuting town in Bergen County, you know, and that speaks very highly of our residents, that they go into the city, they commute, you know, a lot of it by bus. I don't know why we're not even on the map or on the radar. I understand this may be going on for years, but I think that we should at least, you know, maybe it's too far down the process, but at least squeak a little bit and send the letters to our, the appropriate legislators and whoever's in charge of this group, saying that we should be considered.
Considering for what?
For something, light rail, something, I don't know.
We don't have the infrastructure available for...
I don't know. So we're against, I mean...
No, no, we're not against it, it's simply a matter of, the rail lines that are in TNEC are owned by CSX, which only operates freight carriage.
I understand that part.
No, so I understand the next part, I guess, is, where do you want to put a light rail?
I'd like to see if, I'd like to see them work with, I mean, listen...
I mean, if anything, if it looks like the right light rail is going to go to Tenefly or further north...
How are they getting to Tenefly, using...
There's already tracks in place.
Right.
In order to get a track for freight carriage, that maybe we can say, okay, well, if you're going to extend, we think you should extend the light rail to Bergen County, provide for park and ride, provide for New Jersey Transit Service from TNEC to the light rail, so that people here can get there.
I just want to, I just want to be invited to the light rail party, so whatever, however way you want to couch that and send them the letters and let them know that TNEC is important.
So we may, we're not going to get the invitation, but maybe we can be somebody's plus one.
Right, correct. Okay, that's good, plus one's okay.
What other services might the state be able to provide for TNEC residents to benefit from light rail terminating somewhere else?
Correct. Okay. We spoke about number three. Number four, we all are very proud of the recent news about one of our TIVAC members and residents who saved the life during the marathon and then completed the race, I was wondering if we can bring him in for a certificate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And Dr. Pruitt, recognition of Chuck Stewart. If you could let the public know who Chuck Stewart is and what we should be recognizing him for, it seems like a pretty interesting accomplishment.
Okay, Chuck Stewart. On March 26th, the Smithsonian Institute of American History gave its 13th kickoff, and it's an annual program, and it was Jazz Appreciation Month with donations from Ravi Coltrane, son of the international music legend John Coltrane, and from notable jazz photographer Chuck Stewart. Chuck Stewart is an American photographer, best known for his cover photos on as many as 2,000 albums, featuring such jazz performance as Louis Armstrong, Count Basie, John Coltrane, Ella Fitzgerald, Miles Davis, Lionel Hampton, Charles Mingus, Max Roach, Sonny Rollins, Sarah Vaughan, and Diana Washington. His photographs appeared in Esquire, Paris Match, The New York Times, and The Encyclopedia of Jazz. He received the Milt Hinton Award for Excellence in Jazz Photography in 2008. Jazz at Lincoln Center, New York, presented an exhibition titled "Looking at the Music." That was the jazz photography of Chuck Stewart, which ran from November 2008 to February 2009. Chuck Stewart lives in our town, and I'd like to have Chuck Stewart get a certificate for the council meeting.
I think that sounds like an excellent idea. Maybe we could schedule sort of resident appreciation and recognition, and have Prudell and Stewart at the same meeting, we could have a big joint celebrating TNEC residents. Or do you think they each deserve their own night?
Who's Prudell?
I think you can invite them and see what their bill...
Item number four on council-listed items that we just talked about.
Well, we have them both the same time.
Yeah, so if we can reach out to...
How about the 29th?
To both of them, see if it would be possible to do for the 29th, if not, whenever the, whenever the next opportunity...
I mean, if one's available the 29th, the other...
They can...
So let's reach out to them, let them know we want to recognize them, and see when they can be scheduled. Great, okay. Attention Managers' Report.
Okay, I have appointed Harold and Haynes to the position of firefighter in the TNEC Fire Department, effective March 13th, 2014. Next item is dedication of Dog Park. The weather's starting to break, we have the sign, and we would like to dedicate the Dog Park, and I want to know when the council would like to do that.
So can the clerk propose some dates offline to us, and we'll all say yes?
Okay, so I will, yes, we will propose some dates.
Perfect. And by the way, just while, I go, I've gone to the Dog Park a few times during the day, recently, when I was given a tour, and it's pretty well-used.
Yeah.
I don't have a dog.
You have a dog?
No, it's, you know, it's, I have dog envy.
That's weird.
So I wish I had a dog, and a dog.
Okay, next item, shared services with the Board of Education. Recently, I met with the Board of Education, myself and DPW Director, I met with Anthony Giangelo, and we've been discussing shared plowing services, how we can work together. So we're going to be putting together...
This year anymore, okay?
Hopefully not, hopefully. So we're going to be putting together some sort of, in a local agreement, for the Board of Education to look at, for the trustees' board to look at, and for the council to look at as well, so that's something we're working on.
Okay.
And the last thing I have is council-directed items. The Emergency Management Manual, that's been placed at the library and outside here in the lobby. I'm reviewing these website issues with the clerk to add, you know, additional information and determining what resources are necessary to...
On that note, to go on something we just discussed earlier, as far as where do I go to vote information?
We've called the website already.
I just run the site, not the frequently asked questions.
It's in the clerk's tab, it was the frequently asked questions, which will give residents information as to where to vote.
I think that we should add a tab on the banner, on the left-hand banner that says elections.
Or voting, or voting in elections, something like that, voter registration in elections, is an ongoing thing, anyone comes into town, where to register to vote, where, you know, where they vote, as, you know, kids come of age to vote, things like that, so if we can have, I think that's, it should be separate from the clerk, because I think most residents have no idea that a township clerk exists, that the township clerk is the one that they should see about voting, and that's where they should look for information, so I think we can call it out more clearly.
Fine, I'll look into that.
Not to demean the position of township clerk.
Okay.
It demeans civics education in our country.
New Jersey Department of Transportation, the sign boards, council wanted to know what other towns are earning on those boards. We submitted an open request to the New Jersey DOT, and we're waiting for a response. I have reached out to, I've reached out to two companies for proposals on doing a staffing study, I'm waiting for those proposals to come back. CSX, we've tried several times to contact, their government affairs official unsuccessfully. We've also prepared a letter that we've sent to the Congressman, to our Congress...
I think that their public affairs personnel is a part-time employee, and only works February 29th.
So we've written a letter, action for assistance to our Senator and other representatives. I'm going to also invite Chief Wilson to a meeting, I'm trying for the 29th meeting, to have Chief Wilson come to that meeting, and I'm working on arranging a meeting with FDU, with the Subcommittee.
Okay. And Councilman Parker, you had one more?
Yes, I'm sorry, I wanted to add something on the council-listed items. I just wanted to report that the Let's Move Task Force has met two times, twice in the month of, we're in April now, but twice in the month of March. Larry Bauer has donated, will be donating a banner, a Let's Move banner, and yesterday we had a guest come to the meeting, a student who is actually working on a project, Let's Choose.
Did everyone get an email from the student?
Yeah, so they're going to be kicking off their program, and Let's Move is going to be highlighted in some way during that fashion as a project that we support. I think it's a phenomenal project, and I really commend her for even coming up with something.
Yeah, for residents that aren't familiar, Let's Choose was a project brought out by a TNEC student to work with recreation facilities, snack bars, and concession stands, to be able to provide healthy and better choice snack items, so that when my daughter goes to youth basketball, instead of eating Pringles or candy, she may be able to get a, an apple or an orange or a healthy fruit juice, as opposed to the junk that she screams for today.
Yeah, they're going to be trying to upgrade the Filippo...
We can't expect kids to make good choices if they don't actually have healthy choices to make.
The, at the Filippo Prater Field, they're going to be bringing in raw food and trying to do grilled chicken and salad, smoothies, fresh fruit, smoothies, move away from the soda.
Or even just fresh fruit.
Or fresh fruit, yes, yes.
Choose stands for choose healthy options at our sporting events. S-C-H-O-S-E, choose healthy options at our sporting event.
Excellent.
That's it.
Okay, Attorneys' Report? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Yeah.
All favor?
Aye.
Are you close?
Yeah. Yeah, recommend it, okay. And I'm amazed at how you were able to...